We have the meeting, would you please, those of you that have cell phones, would you please put them on silence, please? Appreciate that, thank you. We have the minutes of May thirteenth, are there any additions or corrections to those minutes as mailed out?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Discussion and approval of claims.
Move it.
There's seconds?
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We have the Human Resources Report, I'll hand that around for signatures. Motion to receive that?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Secondary Roads.
Morning.
Morning.
I varied my permit. First item we have for today is the approval of permit for long lines to provide telephone and internet service lines to the new CF Industries Hiring Center along Fort Neil Road. Their request is that, depending on where the utility locates, the current utilities are, that they be allowed to go on either the east or west side of the road, depending on which works better, they'll send us as-built drones when it's completed.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor with motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item B is approval of resolution to adopt the special assessments in the drainage districts.
Each year, the board assigns or approves the Drainage District's, Drainage District resolutions for maintenance and payment of the dues to the Iowa Drainage District Association for the various districts. These levies cover their annual maintenance, any tree and brush trimming, any herbicide mowing, et cetera, that needs to be done along those. It also covers any outstanding warrants that the districts may have accrued. First one is Bennett McDonald and the annual assessment of a thousand dollars.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Second is the Hackley Lateral, also one thousand dollars.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Third one is the Orton Slough Drainage District, sum of twelve thousand dollars. This covers two outstanding warrants along with their dues.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Next one is Smithland for a thousand dollars.
Move it. Discussion. Those in favor with the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Smokey Hollow is to be set at zero.
Move it.
I can second that one.
Smokey Hollow is probably our least active drainage district. It's, for your information, it's a very tiny one that is on both sides of Highway one forty-one. And it hasn't needed or had work done in quite a few years. They have a very small balance and covers their dues.
Those in favor with motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Next is Upper Wolf Creek for five thousand dollars.
Move it.
Second. Discussion.
Are any of these joint with Monona County?
No, these are, the Monona County ones are set in Monona County that are joint with two. So you don't see the Sam Hills, you don't see the, I'm trying to think of what's the name of the inner county one is, in the area of Winnebago Casino, but those are levied by Monona County and then applied to our taxes up here. Those have already, those were set last week, I believe, by the Monona County Board.
Those in favor with the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Weber Creek for five hundred dollars.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Wolf Creek for one thousand dollars.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Wolf Creek Pumping District.
Move it.
Zero. That's District Two.
Okay, that's a what?
That was District Two.
Two, sorry, okay. Those in favor with the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Wolf Creek District Three also for zero. Those two districts have now satisfied their outstanding warrants. As you recall, Wolf Creek District Three had over twenty-eight thousand in expenses accrued just two years ago. That district has basically sold their ground as wetland easements with our CFs. They have now satisfied all their levies, paid off their bills. At this point, they would be eligible to dissolve if they would choose to do so. I can, if the Board wishes, we can send the folks in that district a letter informing them of that. I know that a couple of the district landowners were very interested in dissolving that district.
Yeah, I think that we probably should do that.
Yeah.
So that they know. Now, is most of this pumping area or the Wolf Creek Drainage District, is that mostly now in, what do you want to say, wetlands?
The Wego Slough Wetland areas where the vast majority of the property that makes up the whole great district. Bennett McDonald, for some reason, it's not in my package, but that one.
Move on Wolf Creek District Three.
Those in favor with motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Bennett McDonald, Smithland, was set by the Board in a special assessment for the riprap that was done downstream of the bridge on the left bank. That was to be set at thirty thousand dollars this year.
Move it.
Second.
Those, any discussion? Those in favor with motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any other, I need to sign all those, I didn't sign them either.
Oh, I will make sure you get a pen and pens to sign them as well, so we'll get that after the Board meeting.
Can you give us a little report on CF Road, Allison and all that?
The big pour was this weekend. It went off without any difficulty, our road held up well under the parament.
Now, the big pour was what?
This was the twenty-hour concrete pour, and it was for their, I think their nitrogen reaction foundation. Some of that concrete, if you saw any of the slides, was about a stude, and covered more than a third of an acre. They were having two trucks coming into the plant every five minutes, which means two going out. Our staff checked the road first thing Saturday morning, no problems, we didn't have to go out on it, so we handled it pretty well. This week, we're probably going to be going out and addressing some surface roughness just south of the intersection at two thirty fifth. We got hit by a rain the day after we got it finished compacted, so this week, our intention was to get out, water that area, give it a light scarification with our cutting bits, and then roll it smooth again, so. But we've completed our improvements of growth at the time being. We're still looking at other options for road stabilization projects or products to utilize in that area.
Turnouts, get all done?
The turnouts are all done. Those early rains we had really helped settle them out, they seem as hard as the road right now, so.
Are they used quite frequently by those trucks?
We are seeing them get some use, judging by the tire tracks on them. We had a couple of them by the two residences there on two thirty fifth and Allison. Next week, with the Board's approval, I'd like to have some discussion on a request by CF for us to consider extending two hundred forty of the street over to Andrew, which would allow bypass of the houses, so. We're trying to prepare an estimate of cost of construction and right-of-way acquisition for that project so that the Board should see a memo and be able to have some discussion next week on whether we want to undertake that project.
Good, good idea. Okay, thank you, Mark, I think we're right at ten thirty now. Number five is the public hearing on the twenty-fourteen budget amendments. Is there anyone to be heard on that budget amendment?
Chairman hearing going, will the hearing be closed?
Item B is, okay, I'm sorry, you seconded it?
Yes.
Those in favor with the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item B is discussion and action on the amended budget. Any discussion? Move it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
What was the amendment to the budget?
It was in the agenda packet. Did we get a second on it? Second. The budget amendment totals about three million five hundred sixty-one thousand dollars. Would you give your name, please, for the record, Jim?
Jim Marshall.
Would you give your name for the record?
Jim Marshall.
And it involves a number of different areas. There's amendments here for, from, under the General Basic Fund, for the sheriff, U.S. Marshal, Drug Task Force, sheriff, sheriff, and the Civil Division Grants, the Dare Grant, the Auditor is in here, Conservation is in here also, Teen Court, juvenile attorney fees, all of this is involved in the amendment of that three million dollars.
It's, it reports some use of cash reserves and also some income, like from some grants and stuff, so it adjusts our budget.
Any further discussion? I obtain motion to approve. Those in favor of the adoption of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. You need the secondary roads again, you're back up. Oh, item C, I'm sorry, discussion and action of appropriations to transfer services to area of public safety and legal services under the budget amendment.
I don't know that I understand that one.
Well, I think that if, those are fees under, that individual fees that's come in from the Sheriff's Department that needs to be transferred into the, into these budgetary areas.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor with the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. I think I completed that one. Item six, secondary roads, which is considering approval of, number one, Woodbury County Secondary Roads, Road Budget for Iowa DOT.
Part of the amendment to the budget, when secondary road items are involved, is that the budget we also submit to the Iowa DOT needs to be amended as well. Our primary areas where we had increases were, number one, in gravel and dust, dust palliative treatment, the majority of that expense being on CF Industries Road, the Paul Roads this year. We had an increase in new equipment budget. This is due to our decision to sell one of our dump trucks to Conservation as opposed to trading it in, which resulted in our expenses being thirty-eight thousand dollars higher. That was netted with a thirty-eight thousand dollar sale of the truck to Conservation, so that money was immediately covered, did not come out of reserves. We also had an additional order in culvert pipe this year. That was to cover the pullouts. We ordered over three thousand feet of culvert pipe just for that single project, which pushed that portion of our budget in excess of what we had anticipated beginning of last year.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Those items? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
This requires both the Chair's signature and the Auditor's. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Item seven is hearing of any individual or group wishing to make a presentation on an item not on the agenda.
On April twenty-ninth, you agreed to the agreement with the deputies. And I just want to clarify what you did, because it was kind of misleading, and it wasn't, I don't believe it was intentional at all. But the article in in the paper, and what it said was that you'd agreed to a two percent increase with the deputies.
That's not correct.
Two percent increase and then move the matrix, correct?
No, the two percent was for sergeants and.
Junior masters.
Junior masters.
Right, part of the, yeah, part of the deputy bargaining unit.
Right, but the rest of the deputies did not get a raise.
Well, they did. Everybody in the bargaining unit got a raise. And some of them got some pretty substantial raises, and what was brought to our attention is the appointed deputies were saying that the deputies were talking to them, saying they got a pretty good deal, and that those folks should come back into the unit because they're probably going to be making more money than they were this year. One person got a fourteen percent raise, one got twelve percent, five of them got a ten percent raise, and five, or a couple of seven percent, and five more were at four percent. So thirteen out of the thirty-one deputies in that bargaining unit got a raise of four percent or greater. And the rest of them got two percent, and at the bottom there, it says that no folks got, those three at the bottom didn't get any raise, but they actually get a step increase this year, so they are getting a raise too. So they're all getting raised, and the overall package to all those CWA or the agreement with the deputies is a four-point-two percent increase. And we were never asked to provide you folks with that number. You approved it, and that's what we do, is to, is work with you to do that. So that's four-point-two percent, this is the last piece of the pie for wages for fiscal year fourteen fifty. And so when I saw this and put this together, and I don't know why we weren't asked to provide those numbers before we voted on it, but the, when we looked at, I went back and I looked, because I wasn't able to be here during the public hearing for the budget, and you folks denied an increase for the elected officials and their deputies. And so consequently, my deputies aren't getting any raise, and that was an issue that was brought up, because I watched the videotape, and PJ brought it up afterwards, and so did Mark Johnson. I don't begrudge CWA, they did a good job, in fact, I hope they negotiate for me next time. I apparently don't do a good job for my deputies. Your wage plan employees, your management folks, get three and a quarter percent last year, this year, and the following year. And you denied, my deputies, a modest two percent increase. And Mr. Boykin said something about the compensation board. Could you clarify?
Well, I don't need to clarify it at all. What I need to do, you know, this is new information that's just presented to us this morning, Pat, so I think that what we need to do is look at your figures and also consult with our attorney, because he did go through the negotiations with the organized group along with Mr. Clausen, as our representative, that sat in on all those negotiations, and to see if what you're saying is true. Basically, I know that there is a matrix that was involved here for some of these folks, and that would cause some of the increase in the amount of monies that you're talking about. But I'm not sure that we have all of the information. I wish we would have gotten this prior to, just a few minutes ago, so that we could have had an opportunity
That's my point, you should have asked for it before.
To, to, to look at this, if you had this information available, Pat. But presented to us.
We just did this together on Friday.
But, but just to present it to us now is kind of a surprise. It's kind of a surprise.
It was a surprise to me that you didn't ask for it.
But we did, as you say, do this based on the recommendation from our chief negotiator, who was Mr. Doug Phillips, and also after the union had accepted the proposal. So I need to, I need to go through these figures with people that are familiar with them, such as our attorney that negotiated this settlement with the union. And I also need to look at this, and the rest of the Board needs that opportunity.
I look forward to that, I hope that we can continue to discuss this. The compensation board, I'd like to know, because it was said something about sending a message to the compensation board.
Nobody was sending a message to the compensation board.
Well, that's what, when I asked about.
I don't, I don't, I don't think so. I, but I do remember that, that there was individuals that got up and spoke, not in favor of giving the raises. And there was a motion made by members of this board
During the public hearing, there was no.
To deny, to deny the, you know, the raise this board, elected officials, and it was voted on by this, by this board.
There was no discussion, I watched the video, and there was no discussion during that public hearing. Motion was made, passed, and.
Right, absolutely.
And the.
But we'd gotten the information prior to, we'd gotten the information prior to that, that, that meeting from the compensation board, on their recommendation.
Well, these, this is our job. You know, I think we can do better collectively, if we just discuss, if we have communication between us, between our office, your office, then it's like we usually do. And for some reason, I don't know if we've done something to earn your mis.
Well, Pat, I mean, before, I mean, the, the recommendation was out there from the compensation board. You and the other elected officials had an opportunity to come to this board prior to us voting on it and saying, listen, I wish, I hope that you take the recommendation of the compensation board. That didn't happen from any of the other elected officials.
I was at.
Or yourself.
I was at a funeral that day, but I did talk to a couple of Board members, and they said they were going to send a message to the compensation board, so I'm just wondering if you've ever communicated.
I don't, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I wasn't involved in that, in that conversation, you didn't call me.
You were here during when that conversation.
I, I, no, I wasn't, I mean, I wasn't here. I mean, I was here, but I wasn't involved in the conversation when you had the conversation with one of the, with the other, with the other, with the other elected officials before the Board meeting.
I mean, honestly, it's just.
I'd like some order in the audience, please.
You give this kind of a raise to these folks, and then very next week, you come back and say there are two expenses to use for the security.
Well, now you're getting off on some other subjects.
No, but I don't.
But you started talking about, about this, that you handed this out to us, Pat, and I appreciate that, but I wish that I had, we'd gotten that prior to, five minutes before, you know, the Board.
All you had to do was ask, and it could have.
Well, I didn't know that was coming, I can't read your mind.
No, before you voted on it, that would have been possible if that.
Pat, I think what you're trying to say is, when, when we get, when we get these raises, we should probably have the numbers in front of us before we approve them.
Absolutely, that's the point.
That's what I'm hearing.
I was involved with negotiations for, for an awful long time in another life, and we never agreed to a final without this. How do you know?
That's my point.
So I think.
You were doing this in private sector, you'd go bankrupt the first year.
I think the comment here is that in negotiations, the auditor needs to be involved.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to be heard? Yes, sir. Give your name, please.
Herbert Crowe, I'm.
Herbert.
My name is Herbert Crowe, I got carpings down Liberty Park area, and that drainage system down there. You've been having class of fees for years on that.
What was that now?
That's drainage, that's.
Which one is it?
And how come you people fix that inlet down there? It's a hazard. Now, I have a question, I'm going to ask you people, who's liable to something against her injury or something? Is it Board of Supervisors, or the thirty-some landowners, or myself?
Well, I would assume that it would be, since we are the trustees for that drainage district down there, it would be the County Board of Supervisors that would be liable if someone.
How are you going to match, not a suit?
Well, I'm not an attorney, and we need our attorney here to, to, to give us that kind of advice. And I'm not sure if Mr., what, our attorney here would have that information, but I'm sure that one of our Drainage District attorneys would have that kind of information. But you're right, I'm making assumption without a professional advisement here.
I got an attorney, yes, I have, and he notified you people. And the thing is, you've got three options there. Don't you go out, do any research before you come out and option? You got one option, is, what I already see, the lion's monitor, where you want to open ditch, and that's going to ruin the order on the west side. There are people on the lake or Brownslake. It's going to ruin their property, because you're going to throw all that drainage stuff, junk, and their chemicals, everything, and kill the fish, and ruin that for the people. Take some common sense in on this. And I'm looking out to protect myself, because I'm not going to be sued or equal negligence on your part. And when you fix that inlet, you draw how many years' money on that there in particular project? Where did you go?
Would it, it wouldn't pay for the drainage district.
Jesus, I. What inlet are you talking about?
What?
The inlet going into Brownslake?
Number three.
No, no, you said the inlet.
Which inlet?
The inlet to that tile that goes across the brown lake, that goes under twenty-nine.
Right.
That's our property.
Is that under the railroad track?
There is a railroad track there. You got twenty-nine, you got to go under it, don't you, to get to Brownslake? Do you just want to check on things, or is this a person come up with some far pitch idea and then try to railroad through?
No, we're not trying to do that at all, sir. I mean, we've spent a lot of time on this, and we have, we have made studies, we have sent out information to the landowners down there, as you know, to get, to get, to get your advice on it, and I know that the Brownslake people are concerned about what two or three plans that we formally talked about in these, in these meetings. We have not come to any decision whether or not we're going to do an open ditch or a, under, through tubes or anything down there. This Board has not, the Board of Trustees, anyway, has not made any decision relative to that drainage ditch down there.
I'm going to remind you something, I was down in Salins, and I approached you after the meeting was over, and you had my name, address, and phone number, and you said I'll get back to you. You have never come back, why not? We can solve this problem, we've got a lot of legal incidents, if you want to, but I'm not going to force nothing down that throat.
Well, we're not, we don't intend to force anything down your throat, or any of the other residents down.
I'll make it right for you in court. And I want to know who's liable, I want to write and not to sort them out. I was going to record you guys, but then again, I have no electronic equipment. They do it on planes, ships, all over recording for evidence, because they tell one thing and do the opposite.
Well, Sheriff, we can certainly find out who would be liable if there'd be any kind of an incident down there in that drainage area, if whatever happens now. I think that would be a simple thing for us to find out.
You do that.
Isn't there an informal meeting set up too, I believe, the first weekend?
Would you have another one?
It's coming.
It's coming.
June fourth, I do believe.
It's like the first weekend, June.
Do you invite all of the landowners?
We did. Yes, we are.
Because there are going to be thirty-something other landowners that follow.
We will, we will.
I'm not going to be standing here and telling you a bunch of things, and then turn around, because I'm not a traitor.
Well, we will, we will have that meeting, we'll have that meeting, we'll have it in Salins. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I expect you.
Um, does another gentleman back there like to speak?
At this point in time, I'd like to present a set of flags.
Would you give your name, please?
Tim Nelson.
Tim, we'd be, uh, uh, quite honored to receive those flags. Did you, uh, do that yourself?
I did it myself and I'd like everybody to represent the country and applaud your allegiance if we could.
Well, we, we, we love this country and I think we wouldn't have a problem in doing that, Tim. All right? Let's all stand if we can do it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tim.
Would you, uh, go take that and put that back here? Don't drop it. Anyone else that'd like to be heard?
I have one more thing.
Okay.
Our employee hot dog appreciation luncheon, we usually do that in June.
Right.
Want to maybe consider doing that, set a date? Are we interested in doing it?
I think we're doing, doing the end that we, uh, we've done, that's been a tradition for the, for the Board and, uh, I think we all enjoy getting out there, doing that and bringing everybody in and appreciating our employees, so, uh, I don't have a problem with that.
Maybe.
What date are you thinking about?
I haven't got that far. Sometimes I thought in June before it got too high in July.
Not, not the first, not the first.
What's that date?
Not the first Tuesday.
No, oh, no, we'll need a few weeks to get.
It's primary.
Oh, that would be.
Third or fourth weekend.
We could probably do it like on the, uh, seventeenth, which is the, uh, uh, third Tuesday of the month.
Sounds good.
Anyone else to hear? Saying not to make a motion or someone to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Meeting is adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.